Good evening and welcome to the May 17th, 2022 City Council Meeting. Tonight on the consent agenda are the minutes of the council meetings, May 3rd and May 9th, EDA Commission, May 9th, Planning Commission, May 10th, Library Board, May 10th, Park and Rec Commission, April 13th. Licenses include amplification permit, Fat Pheasant for May 20th, and the regular bills. Council wishes?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Marv. Second, Jim. Any discussion? Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to point out, in the board review, I did see I had one typo on a number. I needed a comma. I had two threes together and it just, so I did catch it and made a correction, but I wanted to let you know.
We won't dock its pay, I don't think, for that. Okay, that correction is noted. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Department heads. Okay, next on the agenda are street closure requests. Did you want to bring the map up, Steve?
Sure. This is the parade route map.
Okay.
But I think maybe start with the other mammals.
Start with the parade.
I think we start with the one that's for the
The bike rodeo?
Third Thursdays and the bike rodeo, correct.
All right, for the bike rodeo, May 19th.
And the third Thursdays.
And the third Thursdays. Okay, everybody understand that? Is there a motion to approve that request or any questions?
I think just to point out, the requested closure is on Fourth Avenue between 9th and 10th Streets for between 4:00 and 7:00 PM, and that's on May 19th, which is this Thursday starting, and then June 16th, July 21st, August 18th, and September 15th. And those are those third Thursday events that are being sponsored by the Chamber. And then additionally, on the 19th of May, this Thursday, when the PD and Officer Wallace are going to be doing a bike rodeo as part of that third Thursday event. So those are the dates and times and the locations. So just wanted everybody to know what you were talking about.
Um, no, I think I brought this up in the past too, about street closures and downtown on the square and the impact that that can have on the businesses around the square. And really, I think last time I talked about it, I said, it'd really be nice to see that rotated. I know the One Street, I don't know my directions, on that side of the square, that that one, we need open for the ambulance, the police, the fire to get through, that that's the important street that we never really should block off for the safety reasons. Okay, but the other three sides of the square, I feel like when we're looking at having repeated events, you know, all summer long or whatever down there, that it's really kind of unfair to the One Street to always have that street, the one being blocked off. So I guess, you know, I know this is, you know, the third Thursday, and she's got things planned out already, but I'd really like to see that that rotate between the three other sides of the square, so that we're always not making that impact on the same businesses every event that we have. And then also making sure that these businesses, you know, all have a heads up on, on these events and things that are happening right in front of their business that could affect them during business hours. Because not all businesses are open just daytime hours. Some of them businesses are open in the evening, which affects traffic to their business.
Any other comments? I guess, I can understand your, your comments, Jenny. One thing I'd ask is if either you or Steve have a visit with the fire ambulance and the chief of police and discuss it if there's any reason that it couldn't be done because of traffic or any reasons?
I think in the past discussions had just been the 10th, the 10th stays open. Ben and Scott are here, is that correct? You want to keep 10th open, correct?
For sure, 10th.
Yep, for sure, 10th.
We use ninth one bit too, but 10th is the main.
Yeah, 10th is the main artery for emergency services, yep. So, and then obviously right in front, we wouldn't do it, we haven't been requested to do it off 5th, behind our building or in front of the emergency services facility, but that would probably not be a very good one either. No.
I guess, and I was really more concerned about the Cottonwood County Highway and for you guys, when you take off, if it's generally down 10th. Okay, well, that'd be my only concern and have that discussion. Right now, we have on the table the proposal that's ahead of us, and have we had a motion on that one?
Yeah.
Not yet. Anybody want to add to Jenny's discussion? Is there a motion to approve or?
I'll make a motion to approve these street closure requests, bike rodeo and the Chamber events, Thursdays.
I'll second that motion.
Motion, Jason, second by Lisa. Further discussion? I do think Jenny's comments will be duly noted. Go ahead, Jenny.
I was just gonna say, you know, I'm fine with supporting this how it is right now, but I just want to encourage people that make requests in the future, Fourth Avenue, and then I believe it's Third Avenue, which would be the other side of the square. I would really like to see things kind of rotated back and forth, just to alleviate things in front of certain businesses all the time. So if people could just be more aware of that when making requests and, and thinking about what activities are going on.
And I would just add that I think city staff should know at City Hall, or, you know, if they come in for that closure, if they want to ask about a different street.
Deplicable parties are here, so we'll, we'll take note of that.
Okay, any last comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and that motion carries. Next, we have the Riverfest Parade Route and Events, June 11th and 12th, Third and Fourth Avenue and 9th Street, as noted on the accompanying map. Correct?
Yeah, there's two things on June 11th, Saturday. One is the parade route, and that will be on the map. I'll show in just a minute. And then the other, the downtown events are essentially from 8:00 AM to 8:30 into PM, so about a 12 and a half hour window there. And they're asking that 9th Street between Third and Fourth Avenues be closed, along with Third and Fourth Avenues between 9th and 10th Street. So there's two closures on that one. And then the one for Sunday, the 12th, they're just asking to close the entrance to Teagles Park as they have the car show, and that would be from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. But you can kind of maybe talk about these as in sections. But here's the map for the proposed parade route, and there was a, this is kind of more or less back to what it was a number of years ago. There's considerable discussion between the Police Department Street Shop and the Chamber, and so I'd like to make sure to thank staff for all their work on, on that with that group to get this worked out well. So this is a proposal, and it has been vetted through our City Hall office as well, and is acceptable, so.
Does the council have any objection to take care of both of the items at once? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve both requests of the street closures and the entrance to Teagles Park?
I'll make a motion to those street closures and the entrance to Teagles Park.
Second. Motion by Lisa, second by Jason. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have the City of Bingham Lake Water Purchase Agreement. The one thing that in the review of this was I didn't see the comparison, so I'm going to ask Steve to just highlight any changes that occurred.
Sure. So the City of Wyndham has had a longstanding water purchase agreement with the City of Bingham Lake in excess of 20 years. Actually, we've been selling them water for 40 years. They had USDA project back in 1981, and so there's a 20-year agreement which was renewed for 20, so it's essentially been 40 years. That agreement is coming due this summer, and so we started working on this a couple of, well, a few months ago. And so we got a water purchase agreement. We kind of updated it, redrafted it. City Attorney drafted the agreement. It's been run through Utility Commission at a couple of different meetings. The primary two differences in this agreement from what our current agreement is, one is the amount of water use per, for a month. They had a 1 million gallon a month limit. They anticipate maybe doing some more spraying through their co-op in Bingham Lake, and so they asked for a million and a half gallons be the limit for June of each year. The amount that's used throughout the year remains the same, however, there's a little bit of more flexibility in June. And then the other thing is there was a, there is a penalty added if they go over the amount of water purchase that's stated in the agreement. There's a 20% penalty on that. And then if it were to go over for three months out of any 12-month in a calendar year, the City of Wyndham would have a right to terminate the agreement with notice. So those are really the primary changes to that. Other than that, the rate, currently, we charge them 10% over commercial. That will continue to be in effect. So a lot of the terms remain the same, and we just tightened up a little bit of the language. We also put in a, have a provision that they can look at the meter on our side of the, our side of the meter, and we can inspect their, their distribution system, because we were, the Utility Commission had some issues. They want to know if, just if there's any backflow prevention on their side, and so we inserted that into the agreement. But other than that, there, it's very similar to what was out there. This does state in the water purchase agreement, the header here that I'm showing up on screen, that's by resolution, so I will ask you for a resolution at a roll call. This will be the resolution that's embedded in the agreement, so.
Any, Marv?
They weren't running up against the limit at all?
No, they weren't running up against the limit, and quite honestly, the City of Bingham Lake did not ask for any expansion of their overall water use. It was just how it's metered out or how it's used out through the year.
Any other questions? Would anyone like to make that introduction to the resolution?
I'd like to introduce the resolution to accept the City of Bingham Lake Water Purchase Agreement.
I would second.
Introduced by Jason and seconded by Marv. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Quaid.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Grunig.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Farid.
Yes.
Okay, next item, Andy's taken his place at the table. And we, he has two items this night, tonight, the first one being a minor subdivision at 2055 First Avenue. I'll let Andy do the explanation.
Andy Spielman, Building and Zoning Official. So I'll introduce these. Steve is logging in. We might have the applicants available remotely here this evening. But as the mayor said, this first one is a minor subdivision. It's for attractive land. It's going to be addressed as 2055 First Avenue. Included in your packet was a zoning application for the minor subdivision. It's a little bit confusing because there's so many applicants, so I'll just try and explain exactly who's applying and, and what they're asking for. The application was submitted by CBC DT LLC. That's the name of the company that's going to be purchasing the site and building a retail store on the, on the site. The property that we're subdividing is owned by, it's actually two tracts. There's a tract A and a tract B. Also included in your packet and attached to the application was the, the legal description. So tract A is a piece of property adjacent to the Guardian Inn property that the EDA owns, and then tract B is a piece of property that's owned by, on the application, it's TJBM Properties LLC. That's the new owners of the, the former Shopko building. So tract B is actually a parcel of land that is the former Shopko building. Tract A is a parcel of land owned by the EDA, so those property owners signed off on the application as well. So up on the screen now is the, the survey that was submitted with the legal descriptions there. You can see tract A is part of that parcel that's owned by the EDA. Tract B is part of that Shopko parcel, the former Shopko parcel. Together, those will be joined under one new parcel. It's in the B2 zoning district. This does meet the, the size requirements with depth, all of that for, for the B2 zoning district. City Code does allow for minor subdivisions to be approved by the council upon submission of a survey, so that's what we have there. A licensed surveyor prepared this. Planning Commission met last Tuesday, discussed all of this, and did vote to recommend the council approve the minor subdivision. So again, this will be taking parts of two different parcels, creating one new buildable lot that fronts First Avenue, which is the frontage road. We do have adequate utilities to the properties, so no, no utility extensions are needed to, to accommodate this. I believe there might be another page, Steve, that shows. Yeah, let's keep going a little bit. Keep going this way. No. Sorry. The other that way, yeah. Yep, that's okay. We, we'll get there. Can you, keep scrolling a few more pages. Oh, right there. That one, thank you. So this is actually a site plan that was submitted for the next application, but we're showing it here. So on this, the, kind of that, I don't know, is that blue, darker blue area? The darkest area on there, that's the actual building that they're proposing. There's a heavy black line that indicates the wetlands in this area. If you can kind of see that, it kind of runs off to a point on the, on the upper right-hand side. So this area is in an area that's classified as wetlands. The applicants have worked with Soil and Water Conservation District in the county to buy wetland credits, so they're able to fill in wetland here, as long as they create more wetland someplace else. This is in an area that the city uses for water retention, so that's a concern for us. But you can see that it's, it's a very small portion of the wetland, and that's the shallower part of the wetland that we're dealing with. To the south and east of this is where the, the deeper holding area of the wetland is. So just wanted to point that out, that this will be taking some wetland, and they're going to have to do some remediation work and some storm sewer work to extend some tile lines and things like that. But they have went through the process of all that. I believe we've got the applicants on the phone if you have questions for me or, or them.
And I think for the record, Andy Gabbert is, Andy is on the phone. Did you want to speak to this at all, Andy?
Yeah, I appreciate you guys' time. My name is Andy Gabbert. I work with an engineering firm in Kansas City called Renaissance Infrastructure Consulting. We are the
That was Andy Spielman, our Building Official.
Any questions for Andy? Marv has a question.
Was there a, a public hearing on this, and was there outside comment?
For the minor subdivision, there was not a public hearing. There was for the variance. We'll get to that in the next one, yep.
Well, I had one question for maybe public interest too. When someone buys wetland credit, is that something that needs to be purchased within Minnesota or within the county? Or is there something that, some type of stipulation?
Andy, do you know the answer, Mr. Gabbert? Do you know the answer to that question? If not, I think, I think I know, but I'll let you comment.
Thank you.
And just for the council's information, when Mr. Haggy was here as EDA Director, we were working with Dave Buckland, Soil and Water Conservation, and he's the one that helped us put it all together to get this forward. So they are aware of the project and, you know, on board with this, so.
Anything further?
With the reduction in the size of the retention, does it still able to do the job that it was created for?
That's almost impossible to say, because I don't know what it was created for. The area that we're taking up doesn't really contribute to the, to the water storage area, so that, that was a bigger concern of mine. The wetlands are wetlands, and we want to save them, but the water storage is more, more my concern. And the area that we're talking about really doesn't contribute to the water storage area.
Any other questions? Good questions by the council. Okay, we have the need now to act on the request for the minor subdivision at 2055 First Avenue. Is there a motion to approve the minor subdivision?
I'll make a motion to approve the minor subdivision at 2055 First Avenue.
I would second.
Motion by Jason, seconded by Marv. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and that motion carries. Item number two, Andy will speak on, is the variance. This is a variance request for the, regarding the number of parking spaces.
Yeah, thank you. So this is the exact same parcel, the same applicants, CBC DT LLC, and then the same property owners. So with this new parcel that we just created with the, the minor subdivision, their proposal is to put in approximately 10,500 square-foot retail business there. Our city code for this size and use of business would require 60 parking spaces. In the site plan that they provided, that Steve had on the screen a little bit ago, they're showing 49 spaces. The second page of the application talked about practical difficulties being that wetland area that we're talking about. If we expand this site into that wetland area, that's more wetland credits that we have to buy, and then that does get into where we would probably get a little bit concerned with losing some water storage. So the site is limited a little bit that way. They are adjacent to the existing former Shopko parking lot. They're working on an agreement to kind of have some joint space there, but this application is asking to reduce the required number of off-street parking from 60 to the 49 that they're providing. On the site plan, they also did note that the Family Dollar National Parking requirement is 40 to 45 spaces. So they are in line with the national requirement for the specific store that they're, that they're proposing. There was a public hearing held with this at the last Planning Commission meeting. There were no members of the public present. I only received one comment prior to, and that was more in regards to the wetland area and, and if we were going to be losing any water storage. And actually, this, this probably will help with that if we, if we allow this variance to keep the site a little bit more compact in this area. Planning Commission did recommend the council approve the variance based on the fact that the, the store is providing the parking that's typical for this type of business as far as the national stores go, and also there's practical difficulties with the wetland and the soil conditions to try and keep the area in a lot smaller and more compact.
Any questions for Andy? If not, council wish to take action?
I'd make the motion to approve the variance on parking spaces.
Second.
Motion by Marv, seconded by Jason, to approve the reduction in parking spaces at 2055 First Avenue. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
And Mr. Gabbert, thank you for attending this evening.
Yes, I appreciate you guys' time. We look forward to working with you guys to get this thing through.
All right, take care. Bye.
Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Police Department Equipment Request. Scott is on his way up. And Steve, we'll get to that slide, I believe. Steve's awful busy here. You ready tonight, Steve?
Scott Peterson, Police Chief. In your package, you have a request for equipment from me for mobile traffic radars and also a drone. And I'll go through both of the requests, and then I'll talk about the supply chain problem after that. Mobile traffic radar is a key component to what we do. We've had to send some of our units in to get them fixed. It's a, our folks take traffic safety very seriously, and if you don't have good radar, it's tough to do that. So we put in a request for four mobile radars at $13,320. Secondly, we've, would like to purchase a drone. A drone would be to assist with search and rescue operations, search warrants, potential drownings, missing persons, what have you. The Police Department had one about five years ago. It was about $500. Didn't work very well. The one time we needed it, it wasn't, we weren't able to use it. I've asked the fire chief to come tonight. We're willing to assist the fire department in investigation of fires. I visited with him about this, and he thinks this is something we should pursue. And lastly, we've been impacted by the supply chain crisis. You folks were good enough to appropriate money for body or weapon cameras last year. We still haven't received them. It'll be October before we get them. We have a car sitting in the garage that we received in January. Our equipment to outfit that car has not come yet. We ordered it in January. It will probably be on the road in June. Law enforcement's been impacted, like many other professions have, with the supply chain crisis. That's why I'm bringing these to your attention. We may, if we were to receive your blessing to order these items, we might receive them next week. I would bet against it. But you, you don't know what you're getting into when it comes to the, I've never seen it like this in my career. So, Ben, do you have any comments on the drone?
I guess the only, the only thing I'd like to add is, is the, the importance of it for fire investigation. We've, we've had a few fires that it would have came in really handy to get up above to see that burn pattern up on roofs before either they collapse or they're not safe enough for us to get up on. before either they collapse or they're not safe enough for us to get up on, or before an excavator comes in and tears them down. To see those burn patterns up on the roof could help us a lot in determining the cause of it. Search and rescue would help a lot with that as well. I just think it's a really good piece of equipment for PD and us that they would assist us with doing that. You know, so I just, I think it's a great investment for the city.
Jason?
And I understand I saw in the information that the request was using ARPA funds?
That's correct.
Steve, can you explain that more fully, what that means for budget?
Well, as we talked about at our budget time, we did... Are getting some ARPA funds. We got about half of it last year. We will get another half this year, totaled about $440,000. And we were kind of biding our time a little bit to see how the council wanted to use those dollars and invest those dollars. Probably a month and a half ago, I suppose, the City Council, we passed the resolution for the acceptance of those ARPA dollars. We took essentially the standard allowance for loss of revenue, essentially that then allowed us to use that $440,000 for pretty much any expense that general government would typically have. Okay? There's some prohibitions for pensions, things like that. But for usually, for pretty much anything that we would normally fund. And this is obviously a general fund piece of equipment that we would normally take under consideration. And so these monies are eligible to be used for that. This is kind of an out-of-cycle request. I think the chief's outlined, one, the need, you know, for it now due to the radar is not functioning correctly. And then, secondly, you know, with the supply chain, which is kind of why he's here, kind of ahead of the normal budget cycle. Now, if, you know, these things are approved, they will essentially come out of the capital request for this fall. So we're kind of essentially almost forward funding something out of it. But it's a different pot of money that you're using. But it will take it out of the ask kind of later down the line, too. So, but you haven't had a discussion, as council, on how to utilize those dollars? And, you know, but this is an opportunity. Your situation that came up, and so that was one possibility. You could certainly decide to fund it from general fund reserve or forward fund it from 2023 capital. That's your prerogative as well, if you choose to fund it. But this was one avenue where it would be eligible.
Thanks. I think it's good for the public to understand a little more fully, too, exactly how that works. Thanks, Steve.
Other comments?
Well, just from a more conservative side, I can see probably going forward with the radios and maybe waiting on the drone until budget time. That would... and then we can take a look at the whole picture instead of the first ask. But that's my conservative thought.
I guess we have two items that I think we will separate based on that comment to give the council an opportunity to say yes or no individually on each one. Jason?
The drone, most of that money is for those four radar units, I understand. And the drone is how much?
$6,878.
Would that drone have come in handy here last week?
We've had several situations over the years that would have come in handy. Six years ago, we had officers shot at. That was what precipitated the conversation of getting into this. If we have a drowning, it's something that can help us. If we have a missing person, somebody walks away from home, they're elderly, that's something that can help us. There's a myriad of things. It's my job, you folks hired me to plan for these things. I come to you with what I need to get the job done. I think it's in our interest to do it. And that's why I brought it here tonight.
Myself, I think that the drone is probably more important than one of the radars or whatever, in your case, you know, for what you would use it for. I know what radar is for, too, so, you know.
Is that from experience, Jim? Okay, you don't have to answer. Jenny?
I would just like to say, I think the use of a drone and the way technology and things are moving forward, I think that's going to be money well spent. Because if you think of if someone's missing or a child goes missing or, you know, anything where they have to be out searching, they call in everybody, you know? And so then, we're paying all the officers, all the Sheriff's Department, the fire. You know, if the ambulance is coming out, we're paying all these additional people to come out and search. Where maybe with the help of drone, we're going to cut down on the response time to be able to find things or help with situations. So I see this as, you know, a little under $7,000. It could really cut down on the amount of time for staff.
I know that about two years ago, a little boy walked away from the school, six years old. They didn't find him until the next morning, and the drone is what found him. And they had people out searching these cornfields. So to me, that's quite important.
I would concur that it's very important. I think, as we all can see, the river's moving pretty fast again. And I wouldn't want to be the one to say no to a request like this if it helps us find a child or an elderly, vulnerable adult, whatever. So I can appreciate your request. As a council, I would like to take these one at a time. I would like to, for the council to act on the mobile traffic radars first. This would be for four of them, correct? Okay, I'll take that one first.
I'll make the motion to accept the four radar.
I'll second that motion.
That motion is by Jim, second by Lisa. Is there any discussion on that, Marv?
And we're saying that's being funded through?
Yeah, that was a clarification I was going to ask for. Is that from those funds or general fund reserve or advance CIP? So I just asked for that clarification from the motioners.
It would be through that fund, yes?
Yes.
So from ARPA? Okay, that's what I've got it as.
And I think, and this is just a comment, that this has to do with also health and safety, which I think is a key in both of these. Being, you know, these are emergency services that the city provides and is integral in that. You know, if there was a different request, because if people know we're approving these in other departments, I think they better be valid request, you know? That has to do with some serious nature items. So I'll leave it at that. I have Department Ed smiling in the back. They're all thinking right now. So they got to be good valid request and presented as we here tonight. So I'm going to ask right now for a vote. If we're councils ready, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries. Secondly, they are... The Police Department and the Fire Department are making that joint request for a drone for the various reasons that the respective departments have outlined. You know, we've seen some impressive videos when we had the flooding several years ago, going up and down that river. And that just key to me is there can be some very good uses for this in emergency situations. And I think the request is valid. The council has to decide if they want to approve this, and it's up to the council.
I'd make the motion to approve the expense to buy the drone from the ARPA funds.
Second.
Motion by Jenny, second by Jason. Further discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is the first step. Once we receive it, perhaps we'll be seeing in '23. I don't know. But we have to have a policy. It's governed by the state of Minnesota. So I'll be here and we'll present that. It's not something we can just put in the air. There's got to be documentation of it. So, thank you very much.
Okay, Electric Department. We have a change order request that's in our packet. This appears to be simply a 30-day time extension. No dollars involved in this request. Jason's here to tell us anything further that needs to be said.
So yeah, the contractor ran into a few issues with the building being closer... Closer to, the fuel tank being closer to the building than anticipated. And then the fill around the fuel tank was also an issue. In the action memo, you know, we had to, we did some studies, engineering. We ended up going ahead with a house mover bracing the inside of the building in case any of the peering fell away. So there was about two weeks in engineering and then getting that all in place. And then we ran into some weather. It snowed again and rained before the contractor get back and attempt to pull it out again, so.
Has the Utility Commission acted on this?
The Utility Commission has not acted on the time. They knew we were in the process of working on getting a change order in place and will present it to them next Wednesday.
Okay, there's a change order, a request for the time extension. Is there a motion to approve that change order?
I would make that motion. Second.
Motion, Marv, second, Jim. Any discussion or questions for Jason? I guess not? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jason. Okay, next we have Personnel Recommendations. The part-time office assistant, that one, Steve, as I understand, will be next meeting? Okay? Think we're getting a nod. Would you like to speak, Cheryl?
I'll update you.
Cheryl Alford's Finance Director. I just don't have a candidate yet that I want to make an offer on the part-time office assistant position. But I do have two summer interns that can be shared amongst various departments within the city that I would like to recommend for approval.
One thing I was going to ask regarding that, do we have to extend the advertisement time or anything on it? Is there a request for that?
For the part-time? I think we had it listed as open till filled, and we'll just continue that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, summer interns.
Yes, so I'd like to recommend Annalise Rigger, who would be shared by the community center and the library. She is working on an elementary education degree. I think that's kind of fitting for her. And then Bladen Dieterman, to be shared between the City Hall and Telecom.
Does the council have any questions first? Jenny?
What general timeframe is the summer internship? Is it a certain period of time or...?
Both of them will be starting just within the week. One will be tomorrow. And hopefully, both of them will be on the tour tomorrow night so that they can see also some of the operations of the city. Bladen will be starting on Monday, the 23rd. Then it goes into early August. Both of them go back to college in August, so.
Is there a motion to approve that request?
I'll make a motion to approve that request to take on these two interns.
I'll second.
Motion by Jason, second by Jenny. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can we go back one thing and make a comment?
Yes, we can.
Okay, the part-time office assistant, I know, I think I brought this up in maybe some other committee meeting or something of, you know, maybe looking at it. I know it's hard all around to hire jobs and those kind of things. But I've kind of put this out there, I guess, a couple of times of thinking about, do we really want to hire part-time? Or should we really be looking for a full-time for that office assistant position? And would it be easier to hire a full-time, knowing that you have full-time and benefits and those kind of things, and get better quality applicants if it was a full-time position? Just want to put my two cents out there.
Thank you, Jenny. Any comments to Jenny's question or comment?
I would ask, I don't know the answer, of course, on how that would fit in with the budget.
I think that's a question that did come up at Personnel. You brought it up there, and that would be the appropriate spot to discuss that as the position is supported by all the utilities, and they would have a piece in that. So to answer Jason's question, that's how it's supported.
Steve said the Personnel Committee did discuss this. And there wasn't a recommendation in your packet as of yet. But I'm sure it'll be talked about again in the near future. Thank you. Okay. I would like to add that in front of you, under Personnel Recommendations... Yes, we can do the Park and Rec Kids first, Steve. You put it on my note to be above that, so that's why I introduced it that way. Okay, Park and Rec, seasonal hiring, as you see on the board. Steve, I cannot read those. Could you, please?
Sure. You got Riley Rafferty, Sadie Rafferty, Madison Prokash, Leah Haughey, Gabriella Siemens-Atero, and Claire Vinker for pool employees.
Is there a recommendation to approve?
I would make a motion to approve the hires for the pool.
Second.
Motion, Jenny, second by Jason. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are these all new hires? They're not from, apparently, they're all at the same wage?
I honestly don't know. Tim put it together, and I don't know the answer to that question. So, sorry.
Okay. Is it okay now if we go?
Yes, please.
Okay. Is, I would like to add, the council has on its table that unfortunately, we have a resignation letter that we have received from Spencer Winsen Reed. Spencer has been the director of the community center for about three years, I believe. So Spencer's going to take a chair and submit verbally his resignation.
Yeah, so an opportunity came up to be the Parks and Rec Director of a town of about 16,000 down in Oklahoma. And it's been a great ride here, done a lot there at the community center, worked with a lot of great people. And so I appreciate that. But yeah, this opportunity came up, and it's kind of the direction I want to keep going with the career. And, but I really do appreciate the chance I've had to be here and work with y'all and couldn't have asked for a better time. So, thank you all.
One thing I've already noticed, is he's saying y'all. So he's already acclimated to Oklahoma.
Oh, y'all, yeah? I spent two years in Tennessee, so I can, I can... Clark's Bilaria over there, so, yep. No, not chewing tobacco for me. Oh, last day, June 2nd. It's a Thursday. Will be my last day in the office. If you want to come by and say hi, welcome to come by and say hi. But our phone calls are great, too, so. But yeah, it's last days then, so two and a half weeks-ish out for that. And anything else, Steve, you want me to hit on? Is that good? Yeah, thanks.
Well, we wish Spencer the best at his new challenge ahead of him. So I'm sure he'll do well and fit the job well. So with that, I'd entertain someone to make the motion to accept the resignation. Hearing none? No.
Sorry.
So, can the chief, like, book me for that? If I don't, you get arrested if you don't get, if you have to leave? I'm just kidding.
I'll make the motion to accept the resignation of Spencer Wenzunreid.
Second.
Motion, Jim, seconded by Jason, to accept the resignation of Spencer. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you for the job well done.
Yeah, we'll see ya.
Thank you, Spencer.
Next here is going along with that resignation, is we would like to get this advertised. Is there a motion to approve the advertisement?
I'd make a motion to approve the advertisement for the position emptied or vacated.
A second.
Motion, Jason, seconded by Jenny. Any discussion? Just the qualification, Steve, have they, they're included here?
Sure. Yeah, the job description, we updated it when Spencer was hired three short years ago. And so, we're pretty good with the way that come out. The requirements for the position were that there's a bachelor's degree in business management or related field, and three years of related or similar experience. So, this, we'll be getting it out as soon as we can. We missed the paper deadline, which was yesterday, but we'll get it in the shopper and get it started, get it on the league site. And if there's any spot Spencer knows, Spencer, if there's any sites that you know for Minnesota rec place or something, so we can get that job posted and get it out. I think we had a couple of personal contacts we were going to reach out to as well, so, we'll do what we can to help.
Okay. Unfortunately, we're getting too many of these, right? Okay. With that, I think we are on to item number nine, mayor appointments. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. I was just trying to sneak it by, and there wouldn't have been no resignation. Next one is the hospital board appointment. And my recommendation is Dan Hormig. I have spoken to the...
Dan Hormig.
Hormig?
Yes. She was asking my first name.
And he is a pastor up at the Good Samaritan Society. I think he'll fit the niche of fulfilling obligations to the elderly in the community with an eye out for our seniors, so, along with all responsibilities in the hospital board. I did talk to the Dr. Fisher, who is chairman of the hospital board. And he thought he'd be a great candidate. And also with Shelby Medina, he said the council has appointed very good in the past several years or openings that we've had. So, they were very much in favor of this, so I'm recommending that appointment.
I'd make a motion to accept Dan Hormig on the hospital board.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any new business? Any old business? Steve is going to chime in.
Just a reminder, we have our city council facilities tour tomorrow evening. I stole the mayor's thunder. We are meeting at 5:00, behind city hall in the back parking lot. We do have a county bus that will be taking us from point A to point B to point C to point D, et cetera, et cetera. And Mr. Balloon will be our driver, so we may get commentary along the way. So, now, I hadn't planned on any food, but would you like me to have like a subway, sub-plate or something like that? So, people can just grab a little something on the bus? Or are you planning on doing something?
Well, we're starting at 6:00.
We're starting at 5:00.
Just checking, everybody.
Yeah, just checking. Yeah, we're starting at 5:00, so.
If we're starting at 9:00?
Happy to do that, I just wanted to know what you thought.
I honestly don't care either way about that, but beverage?
Can bring cookies.
Beverages, like even bottles of water would be significant enough for me?
I'll make sure we have some water on the bus.
Unless there's...
I was going to say, food is normally important to me, to make me think better. And so, I think little mini subs or something, just because we're going to be going, or most of us are going from one job to the next. And then, it's till 9:00 at night, so it's not like we're just meeting for an hour or two. And then, I will bring a little snack as well for all of us.
Because she tempted us with the snacks, Steve, would you please have subs?
I will do that, Mayor, but... Thank you. Remember, we have two interns coming on with us, so they can, don't have to fight over my cookie, so, okay.
Do we have anyone else coming, media?
I don't know if Fran's planning on coming with us or not.
No.
Not sure, okay.
If there's food in mind.
If there's food in mind.
Right. Get an extra one. Okay. Anything else under old business? Okay. Council comments? Jenny?
Okay. Got to go through my list. At the, one of our Park and Rec meetings a while back, Bruce Tononato had come in, presented, and he had asked about planting trees across from his property, which is city property, on that little kind of triangle thing of Langley and Fourth Avenue. And so, in that little triangle area, if people start to notice that there are little dirt mounds there, Bruce Tononato said that if some trees were planted there, that he would take care of them and make sure they were nurtured and grow in that area to kind of beautify that little section of city property, which the city mows, and they will put some trees there. So, I think that'll be a nice addition, and it's really nice to see just some local residents that are willing to come forward and say, you know, I'll help out, I'll do this, I'll do what it takes to help make the property look nice. So, I thank him and his family for doing that. A reminder about Saturday is finally cleanup day. I feel like it's been like a whole month that I've seen people putting stuff out in anticipation for cleanup day. Finally, it's coming this Saturday, so have your stuff out before early Saturday morning. I feel bad kind of for the people picking this all up, that we've had all these rains, and so you see couches out there and mattresses that have gotten wet, and I can't imagine how heavy those things are for people to pick up. But, we finally will get that cleaned up. Then too, just to throw out a reminder, I know the citizen has had it posted in there about the citywide rummage sales that happened in Wyndham the first weekend in June. So, if you have things that aren't things you want to throw out and just are garbage, and you want to have a rummage sale, the citywide rummage sale brings a lot of people to town, and it's nice to see all the people coming and shopping and getting discounts and things like that in our local area. So, that's coming up the first weekend in June. I'm happy to see that we're having college interns come and work with the city. I think that's excellent, to have local students come back and intern around our local community, and then hopefully, come back and fill positions and work locally as well. It's always good to kind of grow our own and have that. Congratulations to all the graduates that are going to be graduating soon, and definitely think about working for the city of Wyndham, or coming back and working in your hometown. Memorial Day coming up, I'd like to thank all the veterans out there, especially my father, my grandfather, who all served, and all the veterans out there. And then, again, just to point out, we have lots of openings with the city. The city office assistant, now we have the library director and the community center director. So, if people know people, definitely try to reach out, talk to your friends, your neighbors, people from further away. Bring them back to town, we need their help.
If there's anything left, Lisa, you could go.
Did you take a breath?
No.
I don't really have much to say, but just want to say good luck, Spencer, on your new endeavor. And I want to thank you for your service. I think you've done a wonderful job at turning the community center around.
Jim?
I just want to add my congratulations to Spencer. I hate to see you go, buddy, but you got to do what you got to do. Take care of yourself, because nobody else will.
Marv?
I was kind of looking forward to seeing Spencer do more great things here, but unfortunately, he's on his way out, so congratulations on your move, I guess, and best of luck in your future.
Jason?
Yes, and thanks, Spencer, for three years of hard work. It's nice to know you as well, as a regular person, senior around the community with your family, and being a great dad and a great husband. I want to also congratulate to all the graduates. I'll be going to some of your parties, of course. And there's a lot of good times coming ahead, and college for some, and, you know, tech school for others, and time off for others. Also, one thing you missed, Jenny, is Riverfest. It's coming up in a couple of weeks, so I just want to get ahead of the curve there. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, Riverfest is coming up, and there's going to be a lot of great things this summer. I look forward to summer in Wyndham. Have a great night, guys.
Thanks for bringing up Riverfest. Steve?
Just two things, quick, Mayor, to piggyback off Jenny's comment about Saturday, May 21st being spring cleanup. Please, people, remember, don't throw things away that are prohibited items, because if they are in your pile and commingled, they will not get picked up. So, do not throw mixes of things into the piles, because you'll be disappointed, and it'll be your responsibility to clean it up later. So, make sure you read the advertisements the city has put out and all the guidelines that are there. And if you have questions, please call and ask. So, that's important. And then, just secondly, echo what other folks have said. Thank you, Spencer, for your time, appreciate it, and good luck.
Did Spencer leave?
I think so.
Well, Spencer, I was going to say a lot of good things about you, but... I'll wait till I go up and say hi to him, so. I think we're good. We're adjourned by unanimous consent. I was just going to talk good about you, Spencer. Sorry. I said I'd come up and say hi to you, though.